Okay, it is six o'clock. Let me just make sure. Garfield shows up, Mark, can you? Promotion, please. Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's June 16th, 2021 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting, the Great Barrington Select Board, will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and parties with the right requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. At this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so by following the instructions at the top of the agenda. No in-person attendance members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we're unable to do so despite best efforts, we'll post on the town's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Pursuant to Mass General Law 7C, 38, section 20F, after notifying the chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any media. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. This meeting is being recorded by the town, by CTSB, by Berkshire Edge, and other individuals. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listing of agenda items, those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting, not all items listed may in fact be discussed, other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Tonight's meeting is one in a series of community listening meetings hosted by the select board. In an ideal world, we would be at the Husatonic Community Center hosting a hybrid meeting. Unfortunately, the Husatonic Community Center does not have internet access. We are working to correct that issue very soon. We will begin tonight's meeting with updates from various town department heads discussing a variety of topics pertaining to Husatonic. Then I'll open the floor up to comments from residents of Husatonic. This meeting is not solely about the Husatonic Water Company, but we will be glad to listen to any comments about the water situation. There will be a meeting in the near future to discuss the Husatonic water situation. This meeting will happen after both reports pertaining to the water company are made public and the select board have had a chance to suggest and discuss those reports. The ground rules of tonight's meetings are simple. Tonight's meetings are simple. And our other community meetings, we're here to listen to you. The select board will not be deliberating on any topics this evening, although we may be asking clarifying questions. This is a listening meeting for the select board. Each participant who wishes to speak may speak once for a maximum of five minutes. I ask that you try not to repeat what others have already said. So I'll start by turning the meeting over to the town manager. Uh, Mark, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I just want to mention, I have not seen Garfield coming in, so if you could keep an eye.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna get us started. Sean Van Duzen is also on the line. Chris Remble will be joining us shortly. Our police chief, Paul Storey, is on the line, and I believe our fire chief, Chief Berger, will be joining us too. And we're just gonna try to run through a list of quick updates to try to just provide a little basic information on some Husatonic projects and initiatives that are getting underway, so, or are already underway. So let me start with a little background on the Husatonic Water Works Company. For those of you that have not been attending our meetings regularly, about a year ago, the select board instructed staff to seek out engineering firms capable of conducting a comprehensive study of the Husatonic water system. And the goals were to, one, identify the capital needs for providing clean or consistently clean drinking water in sufficient capacity for modern firefighting needs. The second goal was to develop a capital plan and a cost estimate, which we've now seen. We saw that recently, it was July 12th. And based on those findings, provide us with a dollar value to help inform our decisions going forward. And I anticipate some questions ahead for the select board. Do we want to consider a purchase? Do we want to encourage a merger between Husatonic Water Company and the Great Barrington Fire District? Or do we want to just simply hand over our findings to the DEP and DPU, which are the two state regulatory authorities for water systems? So engineers spent the winter and spring months working on these reports, and the first presentation was held on July 12th by ACOM Engineering. The second and final presentation is expected this coming Monday, August 9th, and that's by DPC Engineering. And I fully expect that the board will schedule, as Steve mentioned earlier, a standalone next steps meeting, once we have all the information in front of us. And so I should, I guess, conclude before I move on, that we have been sending out alerts through our Code Red system to make everyone aware in Husatonic that we're having these discussions. We've also been posting information on our Facebook page, our website, our Instagram page. So if you're not getting these calls from us through Code Red, please sign up so that we can get you the information you need. It's very easy, just go on our website, it takes about 45 seconds to provide some basic information to us. And again, you can expect to receive another Code Red alert before Monday night, so. We know, anyway, we know a lot more now than we did a year ago at this time, and while the outlook is discouraging, I understand that, at least we're getting closer to knowing what we're facing with the Husatonic Water Works System. Moving on to the Husatonic Community Center, last year, we applied for a D O E R, which stands for Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources Competitive Grant to insulate the roof at the Husatonic Community Center and replace all of the dated early 1990s light fixtures in that building with modern LED, energy-efficient fixtures. So that grant was fully funded, which is super exciting for the town. The lighting work has been completed at this time, and the roof insulation project will be getting underway very soon, I think within the next two weeks, but in plenty of time for, for the cold weather. So we're also in the process of setting up a meeting room at that location. Town staff will be working on that later this week and next week, painting that room just to the right of the entrance in that building, cleaning that room, and then the furniture, the meeting room furniture that's in town hall here now will be relocated to that, that building so that we can host meetings from time to time there. I'm also hoping that the Husatonic Improvement Committee will be able to use that as a meeting room. Since virtual and hybrid meetings seem likely to continue, we're also planning to install internet access and public wifi. Again, Steve mentioned that earlier at this location, so some, some much-needed improvements there. And then onto the former Husatonic School. Again, a little, a little background and history on this, which some of you have already heard, but in June of 2020, the Husatonic Improvement Committee held its first meeting, and their first task was, and still is, to make a formal recommendation to the select board on this property, whether to repurpose it or raise that, that structure. The committee is expected to make a recommendation, a formal recommendation to the select board by October. Is that right? Early October?
Yes.
And in the meantime, funding was approved at our annual town meeting, $25,000, to be exact, to tarp the roof at that location and also board the windows. So that funding was available to us as of July 1st, and the bid package during that month of July was drafted. It was advertised this week, and the bid opening is scheduled for September 5th. So we're happy to answer questions on all of these, of course, at the end of our updates, but I'll turn it over now to Sean Van Duzen, our Public Works Superintendent, to provide some updates on other projects.
Well, everyone, I think the, the project of the most concern...
Bob, we can't hear you. You're not muted, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
No.
I'll come into the room.
I think you're okay now, Sean.
Oh, yeah?
There might be a delay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. So I think the, the project of the most concern for everyone is, is obviously the Division Street Bridge Project. So this week, Time Bond is submitting the nosem intent to the Town Conservation Commission to begin the approval process to work on that bridge in the, the wetland or over the river. Simultaneously, the Chapter 35 review is being submitted to Mass DOT. So we will be going out to bid for that project this fall with a likely start time for this winter and hopefully a completion by late spring or summer of next year. The next project on the list, Ramsdale Library. So L B Architects is currently working on the ADA compliant new entrance to Ramsdale, the design for that. The survey work was completed a few weeks ago, so we're hoping to have that designed on this fall, late this fall, with some prices hopefully associated with the construction. So next is Parks and Husatonic. So the Parks Unit has done two, well, done a townwide Parks Need Assessment of all the parks of Time Bonded that worked last year. We're currently beginning the second phase of the, the sort of global Parks Need, and then be focusing on long-term capital and maintenance costs associated with all parks, so the Parks and Husatonic will be included in that. We're wrapping up the Main Street Sidewalk Project in Husatonic. We're currently a punch list, and hopefully we'll finish up that up soon. Last week, we opened the bids for all of our construction, or sorry, for the second phase of our paving projects downtown, and part of that project, I'm sorry, a lot of echo, is that? I'm just getting a lot of feedback, you guys all hear that? Anyways, we'll be doing a project on the rail trail of Husatonic from Main Street South starting this fall. That'll be to clean up the rail trail and add gravel to it, all of our construction will be doing that. So that'll be a nice project and a nice improvement down there. The town is also conducting a stormwater survey of our critical stormwater collection system. So Time Bond will be doing work, it's hard to look at areas where we need to make improvements to the stormwater system. Also happening soon will be the, the fire station roof project. Will be, Louder Shell Construction will be doing work on the roof at the fire station this fall. I also skipped over Ramsdale Library's boiler will be replaced this fall as well. That's sort of a brief overview of what I have going on there.
So Chris Remble, I'm just looking now to see if he's joined us yet. Chris will be providing, he's in a CPC meeting at the moment, but he'll be joining us shortly to provide updates on both Cook's Garage and the broadband and fiber study for Husatonic. So if you don't mind, Steve, we can maybe lead from to questions and comments, and then when Chris joins us, he can jump in at that time.
So we'll start, as I said, in my introduction, we'll start with questions and comments from members of the audience, just raise your hand, I'll recognize you. Have five minutes to talk, everyone tip to talk once, ask questions. The select board's here to listen, so go right ahead. Okay, Bob Olinsky, go right ahead. Just make sure you state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Bob Olinsky, I live at 204 South Street in Husatonic. Yeah, thanks for this meeting. It's nice to, and thanks for the work that you're doing here. I, my, I, I'm concerned about this sidewalk project. It's great that you put a sidewalk in there. Within an eighth of a mile, there's 10 chartreuse signs warning you of upcoming crosswalks. And that, that was a bit of a shock, but okay, if that's what's, that's what's needed. And I came home the other Friday to see workers digging and putting in bases at each of these crosswalk handicap sections, and I said, what are these for? And apparently, they're for flashing lights. There's not, I don't know of a flashing light at any other crosswalk, but we're gonna have six of them apparently here. It, it seems that it's out of scale for, for the residents. I've got a neighbor that keeps ducks, and he's kept ducks for several years, and they cross the walk, they cross the, the road pretty often to go to the neighbors and eat slugs and stuff, and none of them have been hit. It just seems like it's, it seems like it's wasted money and it's, it's overkill, and it's not a state road, so it's not mandated. It was more like somebody had a, a safety crosswalk catalog and picked one of each. You know, I don't want it to turn into a rant, but I, I have my doubts that anything I say will stop anything, that it's already moving forward. But again, it's, it's, it's about scale. It just, it's way out of line for, for what's needed. There's, there's over 100 feet visibility from any crosswalk coming up to the crosswalk. If you're in a car, you're 100 feet away, you can see where there's a crosswalk. And it, it comes down to, you know, a little bit of personal responsibility. I don't know, I was taught, look both ways before you cross the street, you know, and do we have to have a safety, you know, a safety sign for every eventuality? Anyways, thank you for your time, thank you for listening to me. Thank you for your comments. Who else would like to speak?
Can I ask, are those mandated, is that?
Right, this is, we're gonna listen, and then we can put it on an agenda, we can talk to Sean about it.
Okay.
But I think, you know, I think Bob's right, it's not a state highway.
Right. Tim Bailey.
Good evening, everybody, thanks, I appreciate this meeting as well. I'm pretty certain Sean's well aware what I'm gonna state. We're talking about the completion of the sidewalk project coming to an end. Will it be fully ADA compliant at the end of it? I was, you know, extremely adamant throughout the whole project that there were some concerns as far as ADA compliance. That's still my main concern, is being completely ADA compliant. I was just wondering how that's working out. Thanks.
Sean, you wanna just answer?
Sure, so it will be ADA compliant, and there will be, there'll be a few bump outs, five-by-five pads that you had mentioned that we need to add that weren't a part of the original bid. So we'll be doing that this fall on the backside with another contractor, as we've met the threshold for change orders with this current contractor. So they will be completed, those pads, likely in September or October.
I see Chris has joined us, so let's, Chris, you can give your updates now if you would like.
Oh, hi, everybody, thanks. Can you hear me okay? Great, there were two things I was asked to give you a quick update on. One was the broadband study, seeing if we could get fiber optic cable strung to Husatonic Village. So we are working on that, there was $20,000 approved, I think, two town meetings ago, I think it was at a special town meeting. We are working on that, so we filed an application with the owners of the utility poles along Park Street 183, so that's Verizon and National Grid. They are, their engineers are looking at those poles and determining what, if anything, needs to change on the poles so fiber optic can be strung on those poles. So we're getting the results of that study very soon. That will give us an idea of how much the construction cost might be to, to take fiber at this time, so. Please stay tuned, I don't have a number yet, but we're, we're working on. Okay?
Here.
Okay?
Please.
The next one, I think, was Cook's Garage, is that right? So Cook's Garage, as you know, part of the old Monmouth, old complex, we've been working on assessing that through our Brownfields Assessment Grant. So now, after a year or two of work, we know the extent of the contamination in that building. Some existing contamination was already mediated by us under Brownfield Loan Program, and we have a sense of where the hazardous building materials are, et cetera. And at least from a Brownfield perspective, what would it take to renovate that building? So we're, we're at a position now where the select board can work with the Improvement Committee, or however it wants to move forward, to determine how to, what the disposition of that building should be through an RFP or auction, start to think about what you ideally might want to see there. So we're, we'll be in a good place with that building and ready to move forward, hopefully towards redevelopment.
Thank you, Chris. You have any other updates, Chris?
I, I think that was it.
Right, thank you. Other questions or comments, concerns from the audience, just raise your hand? We'll start with Michelle LeBeere.
Good evening, Michelle LeBeere, 70 Division Street. I, just a couple, quick question, I was wondering if at some point the chair could announce how many people are in attendance for the meeting?
I can do that right now, Michelle, I was gonna do it when we started select board time. There are 10 panelists and 24 attendees.
Thank you very much. And I just want to make a comment on the Brownfields presentation. People who are interested in Cook's Garage, it would, first off, it was an excellent presentation on all three sites, but for tonight's meeting, the Cook's Garage site. And I was wondering, as we move forward in the meeting, I'm not sure if that means, you know, people who couldn't attend the meeting, if it's recorded, and maybe Husatonic residents can watch it and learn more about the Cook's Garage, and I found it really interesting. One topic is police presence in Husatonic. I've noticed, I've been in Husatonic a lot, there is an uptick in a lot of taking going on in Husatonic. I was surprised when I was at the Husatonic School to see the amount of beer bottles around the school and that type of thing. So obviously, activities are going on in Husatonic, not to mention that high-speed traffic continues in Husatonic. I do see a cruiser from time to time, but I don't know what the rotation is for the police department up there. Yesterday morning, at 6:42, I was driving up Van Duzenville Road on the way to Lennox to work, and cars were flying down Van Duzenville Road. These were trucks, these were our neighbors flying down Van Duzenville Road. And so I do know that the police department is making some effort, but like I said, I would like to see an increased police presence up that way, if it's at all possible for the police department to do so. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle, and Chief Storey is on the line, so I'm sure he's taken note of that, Michelle.
Thank you.
Carol McGlinchey. Just unmute yourself.
Sorry, Carol McGlinchey, 10 Beacon Hill, Husatonic. I'm not sure if this has been addressed previously, but I heard you say something about possibility of putting Cook's Garage out to bid. If we are ongoingly getting more and more concerned about the quality of Husatonic water, if the town owns that building, is there any discussion, any possibility, if we ever needed to access that water there, if we would be able to? Is this on the table at all, or is it not even consideration?
I'll let Chris answer that, that, as Michelle said, there was a really good meeting last night, that was briefly discussed. Chris, do you want to just explain that?
Sure. No, unfortunately, we can't consider that as a public water source. You know, it is good clean water, but in order to be properly regulated as a public water source, the town would have to own or control everything within 400 feet of that wellhead. And that would include all of the houses, all of the businesses, all of the mills, the railroad, the roads, the bridges. So it's, it's, it's not really feasible in the real world to be able to do that, nor do we actually know where the source of that water is. So unfortunately, for a variety of reasons, it's, it's really infeasible to consider that as a public water source, a drinking water source.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, anyone else? Please raise your hand. Dan Bailey, go right ahead.
Thank you, board, for having this meeting, certainly appreciated. Dan Bailey, 207 North Street in Husatonic. So a couple things, just a couple comments and a couple follow-up questions to what Sean stated earlier. Regarding BW maintenance in and around Husatonic, obviously, it's been a very wet year, and it's not always easy to maintain a regular mowing schedule. However, I have noticed, being that I walk mostly through the cemetery almost every night, I do notice that the cemetery does seem to be behind on its mowing, yet St. Bridget's, the other, the backside of the cemetery, seems to be regularly mowed, at least more often than the front side does. As well as the maintenance in and around the Husatonic School and the Community Center, I see that the mowing's been done in those little parcels of property, but the weed whacking is certainly something that needs to be addressed. Some of those weeds are six and seven feet tall along the, along the Community Center. It doesn't really say a whole lot for a town-owned building that has weeds growing up the side of it, and those weeds could eventually turn into something that we don't want. In other words, it could start to interfere with the stock or the building, too. But also, again, I'll echo the sentiments that Michelle made about around, in and around the school building. I, I understand it's a defunct building at the moment, but I still think we have a responsibility to make sure that it is maintained and cleaned. And in the past, over again, over the summer, I did notice that the lawn at the semi, or the, excuse me, the Ramsdale Library had, had been unkempt for quite often, it seems to have gotten better. But again, it's, it's one of those things where it's, whether it's the weather or not, I think residents of everybody in town of Great Barrington deserves to make sure that our properties are well-maintained. And getting back to what Sean said earlier about the change orders, the thresholds, the threshold was met as far as the sidewalks. Now, it's my understanding that all the things that they're just doing, those shimcoats, the grinding of the edging and the curbing, the repair of the, the steps, really shouldn't have been change orders if they're screwed up in the first place, mistakes by the contractor. So I'm not quite sure why, why, why isn't there room for change orders? If they screwed up, they're getting paid for fixing their mistakes. Doesn't really make sense.
I'll let you just answer that when it looks like you're, you want to.
Sure, so the work you described, we're not paying for. The change orders were the extra catch basins that were installed to try to deal with some of the drainage issues, as well as the fencing that was around the top of the wall and down below. So the punch list items, we're not paying for, these were additional items that we changed to try to deal with some of the drainage issues prior to the work. uh prior to the work commencing.
Alright, thank you. And then just one other quick question. Sean, do you know when the anticipated completion, other than the, the, um, five by five bump outs that you mentioned, um, earlier and being completed in the fall, when is, when is, um, Cackaback is supposed to finish his work?
So I, I haven't talked to the engineer. I think they were doing some work there this week, or last week rather. I'll probably have a better idea in the next few days and I can certainly email you when we get to that point and I know more. I do know that they have to, they have to install the flashers still as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Trevor Forbes.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to, um, um, be part of this meeting. Um, Trevor Forbes, uh, three twenty-five North Blaine Road, and thank you all for holding this meeting. I just wanted to, um, uh, add to one of the comments from, um, uh, Michelle, and that was that it's, I'm well aware of the issues with traffic on one eighty-three. Some very heavy, uh, trucks seem to be going up and down one eighty-three. Um, but we also get them on, uh, North Blaine Road as well. And I continue to be concerned about some examples of reckless driving and speed on North Blaine Road. So I just wanted to, um, push that into the discussion. I'm not sure what you can do, but you may have some, uh, ideas. But for example, I was coming back to, um, coming down North Blaine Road from Williamsville, um, double yellow line and somebody passed me, must have been going at least seventy miles an hour. And, uh, you know, this happens all the time. So I just wonder whether there's something that can be done about it, but I just wanted to raise that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And as I said, the chief is here, I'm sure he's making notes. Anyone else? I don't see anyone else raising their hand. Here we go. Daniel. And my first rule is you get to speak once, but you didn't use your five minutes, so.
I know. I, thank you, Steve, I appreciate it. Sorry. It was, it was one other quick question, um, and as I turned, turned to look, I saw Chief Berger there again. Um, and this is regarding the fire hydrants. I know I always ask you this question, Chief, but have you tested the hydrants in, in Husatonic recently and are you satisfied with the conditions and the water pressure that those hydrants are putting out?
Thank you, Dan. Just unmute yourself, Chief.
Okay, um, yes, uh, we do not actually test the hydrants. Um, they are flushed by Husatonic water, um, annually. And the modeling meets what, um, the modeling that was just done, um, by the engineers actually almost precisely meets what we actually experienced there. And, um, so to, to answer, um, am I happy with the, um, pressure and flows there? Um, the pressure's not a concern, it's the flow that is. And, um, uh, ideally, uh, it would, the, the flows would be substantially greater in Husatonic. But as that report also outlined, um, there's no, uh, fix, um, quick fix for that. It's a massive multimillion dollar upgrade to the system in order to increase the flows there.
Thank you, Chief. Um, Denise Forbes, go ahead.
Hi, Denise Forbes, three twenty-five North Blaine Road. Um, that we mentioned the water quality over, um, well, the water pressure over in Husatonic. The water quality is still, continues to be like mud. Um, have we gotten anywhere with that? Because I am so tired of bathing the kids in water that is disgusting. And I look at my, my towels when I take them out and the towels are stained from this water. And I know you're doing a study and engineer report and everything else, but we're living in this every day and it doesn't get any better. And we're just really at the point where I'm ready to dig a well, but I don't know how long that would take and all the processing with that. It's just really frustrating that we're paying Husatonic water for unsuitable water. And, um, I know I'm not the only one. Everyone who lives in Husatonic is dealing with it, but anyway, I just wanted to put that out there again. Thank you.
Denise, I think you've been to our meetings, you know what we're doing and what we can do and unfortunately, what we can't do fast enough.
I know, I know. It's just, I, I would like to see more pressure put on Husatonic water to do something to clean up the water, to make it better, but I know there's a lot of infrastructure, time, a twenty-year timeline. It, it's just really crazy. And we're paying for it. I think we should all get a rebate from Husatonic Water and not have to pay the prices we pay. That would help us a little bit with the pain, because we're buying Berkshire Mountain Spring Water every day. And we're, um, also having filtration systems put in. So everyone here should get some compensation from Husatonic Water, because it's not fair that we're substandard water we get. Anyway, that's my thought.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Michelle, you're gonna make me break the rule again. Go right ahead.
Actually, it's just a quick question. I was just thinking, um, about this. Um, as Denise Forbes stated, we're paying full price for a substandard product. And so there are people who are buying bottled water, they're putting in filtration systems. This is the water crisis that is going on. And I, and I hate to put Chris Rambold on the spot, but, um, is, you know, I was just wondering if there, if there is any sort of grant or subsidy out there for areas that are in a water crisis that perhaps could offset the costs of homeowners filtration systems? Um, and so that's just in Chris in his spare time, you know, just, just because he, you know, you, there are the grants for the repairing your homes and that sort of thing. I'm just curious about that and I will actually uh, go out there and look at it myself. But, um, also, uh, I wanted to just ask you, you don't have to address this tonight, just one more question. Uh, it's been brought to my attention that wells were dug on the Taff Farms property on Division Street years ago that produced, um, quality water. So I was hoping the Town of Great Barrington will look into that. I know it's APR land. Uh, but first off, why did the town dig, dig wells? And is it?
So you know the town didn't, it was the Great Barrington Fire District.
Okay, which is Quaisai, Great Barrington.
Yeah, the Quaisai municipal entity, completely separate from the Town of Great Barrington.
But through which the Town of Great Barrington proper receives their water if they're not on a well, correct?
Right, just like Husatonic Water Works Services, Husatonic.
But also, doesn't the Great Barrington Fire District finances go through the Treasurer Test Collector's Office billing?
No, it does not. We collect money for them for our fee.
Right, so it does.
No, it doesn't go through us. We turn all the money over to them.
But you're, you're participating in the collection of it, correct?
Correct, for our fee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we will now move to Select Board. Time, Eric, do you have anything?
No, uh, thankful for the meeting. Uh, glad people were able to come out. Um, was hoping for more, but, uh, glad that we had, uh, it turned out we did. Um, definitely would like to discuss a few of the items further. Uh, maybe get, discuss the flashers and stuff, uh, further.
We will put it on an agenda.
Thank you.
Ed?
Yeah, I, I want to thank everyone for coming. I wanna, no, we're, all of us were taking notes and um, there's something about the format of this. Do you still hear me?
Can everyone hear Ed?
My computer just disconnected, so you can't see.
Yes.
Alright, um, and there's something about the format that makes it sound like we're not responding, but that's because legally we can't discuss things that aren't on an agenda. Um, so we would, all of this will be addressed, um, at future meetings. And I finally want to say, and this is another thing, if you've been coming to our meetings, you know, we are also frustrated um, about the water situation and how little we can do and how long it will take to do what we can do. Um, you know, despite the fact that four of us aren't drinking that water, um, we're still all pretty frustrated by it. So again, thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, I, I'm, uh, very grateful that this, uh, meeting took place and thank you for everyone that, um, is participating. I'm looking forward to the Husatonic Improvement Committee, uh, presentation, to their presentation in October, um, about the Husatonic School. I think that we really need to make a decision and move on before the thing collapses or, uh, we decide to save it. Um, and just like everyone else, and I'm anxious to see what we're gonna do with the Cook's Garage. Um, I'm looking forward to getting something sorted with the Husatonic water. Thanks again.
Thanks, Emily. Uh, thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. Uh, this will not be the last Husatonic meeting. There will be more. Um, with specific subjects, probably Husatonic Water Works, Husatonic School, Cook's Garage, all being front and center. Any, um, media time? Saying none, unanimous consent, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.